Is this a regular meeting?
It's a special.
Special meeting.
Be right back.
Thank you.
22.
Yes.
All right, we'll get started. So where do you want to kick off from Tracy?
Well, if you gentlemen would go to... Under the Commissioners tab.
Hey Tracy, well before we get too far into this, since I've got to skip out here in a little while. On the Conservation District, can we actually use one cent since that's a service? Since they're using that.
But then once it went through you.
Okay, well I... No, I'm just, I'm asking because I...
It's a mitigation.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that that was something that we could actually do because, you know...
No, I would always go with this, but we have...
As long as it's okay, that doesn't bother me. I just want to make sure that we could get up.
Under the Commissioners tab, Road Fund Worksheet. It ends in 36. I believe it has its own separate tab under the Commissioners. I see one that says County Road Fund Expenditures.
It's got hot mixed gravel. Long Canyon Colbert.
It's the tab after Commissioners.
Yeah, and if you look at your Green Bar Worksheet, please.
I went over some figures with Mike Hagler as we talked about, about one cent, and then we looked at these, this Road Fund line or department also, and I just wanted you guys to be aware of some of the additions. Now remind you, these are restricted road funds and non-restricted, so, but they do impact the budget. If you look at 8700-00536 Gray Reef Bridge, we added 10,000 to that. It's a new account line, I apologize. So you guys are not going to have that on there. We just added that account line, I apologize. So there's 10,000 under that, it's called Gray Reef Bridge.
What's the cap number?
It's 8700-00536. So Mike asked that we put 10,000 in there for engineering. And then if you go to 9182 County Road Study, Mike asked that we add 50,000 to that, particularly for Strawhacker Road. What number is that again? Fifty or 1.5? Fifty. 9182. I think it's on page two of that worksheet Dallas. So that went from a requested zero to fifty? Correct. And that's from the current, just the last floods that we had. And then at the very end, the 9328 Circle Drive, he wanted that at 55,000. Now just a reminder, on these account lines, you know, Mike obviously manages these, uses road fund monies that, so, but we do put it in as budget requests, so we have bookkeeping on that for an expense account. Did you say 55,000? Yes.
How much did you say for Strawhacker?
Fifty.
Fifty for low.
Yep. And that's probably low.
Yeah.
Okay. Then if you would go to Road and Bridge, unless you have any questions on any of those. And I believe it's page two of his narrative. Where it says one cent sixteen funding. Is that page two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So him and I went through that because I was afraid some were duplicates and that type of thing, and we had discussed me getting with him and doing that. So the 170,000, that one haul truck, that is complete, so that will not be a request. The two pickups at 140,000 is complete. That one blade, that 275, that's a new request, which wasn't requested during the one cent 17. So what I handed you before we started is a one cent reserve list, and I added that to this one cent reserve. Now this is just, you know, this is not approved by any means, so this is just for conversation, but I just put it on that list. And the utility box for 17,000 is a new request, so that's on this one cent reserve spreadsheet. And then also the 25,000 for the Neighborhood Road Fund is on this reserve sheet.
That's recurring, isn't it?
If you approve it, correct. Yes, that's Improvement Service District stuff. And then if you look at the one cent reserve projects under Road and Bridge, the haul truck, the 170,000, it's complete. However, we haven't got the bill for it, so it'll be a one, you know, it'll be a new fiscal payment, so that's why I put that there, it's a carry forward. And then also down below, the Herps gravel pit and the Buffalo Creek gravel pit, they were approved in fiscal '23, but those have not been completed, so I carried those forward as well.
Tracy, do you know where we're at on those? Did Mike say?
He did not.
Okay, thank you.
So any questions or concerns on any of that? Yes?
Peter?
Just a question, thanks for sharing. Gravel for Roads was on his narrative for 350,000. We had quite a bit of discussion, but I can't remember, and I don't have my notes, I'm sorry. But I don't see it here on this draft that he gave us today.
Correct. He said take it out. He said that will be covered under the Road Fund money, the 750,000 that he has in another account line, the 9304. It's incorporated into a previous budget request already.
Okay, and I do remember the 750.
Yep.
But...
He said that 350 is included in that map.
Okay.
So he said, "Don't worry about that." Any further questions on that? Clear as mud, I suppose.
Peter?
We'll try to keep it informal, but then... So the carry forward, Herps gravel, or Buffalo Creek, carry forward from fiscal year '23, right?
Yes.
It doesn't have that on your note here like it does on the haul truck, but those have been funded through the carry forward?
Well, they were approved this current, in fiscal '23. However, nothing has been expended, so he's asking for it to continue.
Any other questions? Good.
And then while we're looking at that one cent reserve project listing, we had talked about up on top, I put the Neighborhood Cleanup for Development at 50,000, like we had talked about. And then the Selenium mitigation for the Conservation District, that was missed or omitted from one cent 17 conversation. And then the fair, I didn't know what we needed to put there, if anything. Also, as instructed, I put the Town of Midwest Water Line in there. And then one shelter at Bear Trap, as we discussed, and then also the Lodge. And then if you look down, the RDG implementation, I did take that out because I believe that was the direction, but you can correct me if I'm mistaken. Remind me of RDG.
I think that is what we decided because with the road being reconstructed and everything else, we weren't going to do anything until after that was a done deal. So that's going to be FY '25 at the very earliest. So...
RDG stands for?
It's assigns. It's assigns that are up on...
Oh, is that the name of the company?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's assigns that are up on Caffrey Mountain. So that, I can't even remember what it stands for.
Yeah. And getting with the Treasurer, just before this meeting, there's a little over 12 million in the one cent cash reserve, just for reference.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of one cent discussion, I don't know exactly where the money's coming from to pay for some of the expected expenditures for the Health Department, Architectries in particular. It's a roughly $2 million contract. I think a significant portion of the work will happen, I'd say maybe a third, maybe a half of the work will happen this fiscal year. I guess this fiscal year's 12 months, so maybe more than that. So where, maybe Tracy, this question's for you, where are we going to come up with 1.25 million dollars for some of the work that's going to be done?
Mr. Chairman, so provided you're not using, you're not going to start using any of the SLIB money or any of the grant money that we're getting yet.
Preferred for reporting, requiring reporting reasons?
Right. So I guess reserve would be another option.
12 million?
Yes.
Twelve. Twelve.
No, I mean she said 12 million in.
Yeah.
Now this also, this 12 million doesn't take into account what we did not expend this current fiscal, obviously, so.
I don't know where it comes from, but I think it'd be prudent for us to budget somewhere for an amount to pay for a contract we've been into. So I'm sure that firm MOA will start billing within the next 12 months for sure, probably a lot sooner than that.
Tracy, how hard is this? Is it for us to amend the budget during the year?
We do it all the time. The transfers that I do with resolutions, that's a budget amendment.
So we could do that.
But I think we need, speaking of the Health Department, I think we need, we don't need to take it out of so many pots to where the reporting is going to get extra tedious. You know, we need to make darn sure that we're pulling everything from the correct expense account and not having several would just be my recommendation for reporting. I would hate to get behind on that.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm not disregarding what you're saying. I'm just, I think we'd be better off doing what Tracy said, figuring out where we can take that and keep it in a single pot, and we can address that a little bit down the road.
No.
I only couldn't, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, we do have a little bit of time before we have to, we have to broach that subject. And I'm not saying a lot, I'm just saying a little bit.
And it's over $2 million. And I hear what you're saying Dave. My feeling or thinking on amendments is maybe they're more traditionally unanticipated, more emergency, or, you know, uncertain. And I think the only uncertainty here is where are we ultimately going to, what pot or pots are we going to take from? But I think we have contractually entered into an agreement to pay 2.1, 2.1 million dollars. So I, again, I might, I'm still leaning toward having it in this year's budget somehow.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, so I do have an expense account for those two lines. They're currently at zero because we haven't, you know, we didn't put them, it's in the Projects and Grants Department, so to speak. And I typically do budget transfers to cover those expenditures, and it would be, but if you're saying not, we wouldn't be dipping into that grant money yet, is that, am I understanding that correct? With the architecture fees, we would not be yet?
Why couldn't we do that? Why couldn't we dip into that?
We, I'm not going to say legally whether we can, and I'm not going to say legally whether we should. I'm not going to say whether we have the money, you know, in our Treasurer's office. I think we do.
Yes.
I don't know if there are still funds coming in, but I know we're going to go through that, and I know we're going to go through, we're going to need to have a plan for the additional monies that this thing ultimately is going to take. So I don't, I'm just saying we have the conversation now.
Mr. Chairman, my concern with all the buildings, any building today in this world, doesn't seem to come in where it's, when you first look at it, there's somebody to say, "Well, 40 million to build the Health Department." But what if it's 60? Or like the Lodge? So I do understand your concern. I've had the same concern. I have that same concern with the issue of the costs of maintaining our county buildings, of having its own separate funds. So I can see why you want to do this, but I, like you, I really don't know the legality of the government money that's available and what it can be spent on. I'd like to know though. It sounds like we have the money for this, don't we, Tracy?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I don't believe we have the full amount that the total project's going to cost. I could be mistaken.
I don't know what that number even is. Do you have an idea what the number is that we may ultimately have to come up with?
I do not.
Mr. Nicolason, do you have any ideas?
Yeah, I think, number one, there is a great amount of uncertainty. Number two, the current estimate is roughly $30 million. And the Health Department was before us a month, a few weeks ago, and said there's about a $9 million unknown. But what, I guess what we're trying to do at this point is through the Architect Services, the design will help to nail that number down Dallas, so that we'll know. And I don't think any of us want to go for a $50 million Health Department project, but that's where we then have a say like we did on the Lodge, and say, "Well, cut here and cut there." But right now, we're committed to the $2 million for the Architect fee, and that's it.
Well, do we have the money to pay for that now? If we do, it just should be set aside? And I guess that's what you asked, isn't it?
Well, you have one cent cash reserve or your balance sheet cash reserve, but I'm not the Treasurer, so.
Maybe we need to find out what we have before we have that discussion. And find out what the legality is and what we can and can't do.
Well, I... I can't imagine you wouldn't be able to pay architecture fees out of grant money, but again, I don't know the scope of the grant.
Who does know, I wonder, with respect to the grant?
I would say Nick is probably one of, probably the better person to ask for sure, and he is out today, but...
We had, look, I don't know what even the issues are, but with the Tribal Impact Assistance Funds, the reporting requirements don't start until we start spending. So I'm just wondering if this is the same kind of thing. So yes, we have some money, and if it's easier for this board to take from that pot, then okay, but we ought to make sure we know what the strings attached are before we say that's where it's going to come from. So, and maybe some of the Commissioners, Dave, maybe you're not comfortable with taking it from one cent, or maybe it's just the idea in general of raising the total dollars. I'm not exactly sure if it's a philosophical thing or what, but...
I just think we ought to check and see what legality is and what we can take it out of. We know we're going to end up making up money at the end, one way or another. So...
Well, that's kind of a loaded question because we have reserve projects that, as they were expended, is when we transferred from the one cent reserve into that account line. So I can give you a general idea. But Commissioner Nicolason, do we know how long that architecture process is going to take, or would it be all paid within this next fiscal, or what would the timeline look like?
So that 2.1 million is, also includes essentially Construction Management, too. So I mean, we're talking about from basically now, because they're working now, through the end of 2025. So it, the majority of the work, it's my recollection, comes more on the front end than the back end, but I don't have the proposal in front of me.
I just think we need to have the answer before we start alligating and delegating.
Well, if you put in the general fund budget, you know, that $60 million bottom line number that you have, that you're trying to balance to, you're not going to be balancing that. But we can certainly, and I don't have an aversion to putting it on this one cent reserve at all, as long as when the reporting is done, whoever does that, you know, whether I need to be involved in that too, then we know we have multiple account lines that it's coming out of. So the reporting, because they don't care what account line it comes out of, they just need the total reported amount, or the total expended amount. So I just want to make sure that that reporting is 100% accurate because it's not all going to come out of one account line, based on how the expense accounts are set up.
Well, what do we do, Mr. Chairman, if we've spent 2.2 million? We've made the deal. So we've got to have that money in a pocket somewhere. So we should identify the pocket where the money is, or multiple pockets, and plug that in somehow. I guess that's as simple as my mind can handle it.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is that we need to find out. We need to have more information before we start saying we're going to put that money in there.
But, Mr. Chairman, at the same time, if we want to add it to the sheet, which we certainly can as a placeholder, because that's kind of what the Lodge is right now as well. It's on here, we know it's an obligation. And then if we need to adjust the budget, if the reporting requirements are such that we can't, or we come up with something different than what we're thinking the reporting requirement should be, we can always do a budget amendment during the fiscal, that's not a big deal. So if you would like me to put it on the sheet, I certainly can and keep track of that. I don't have a problem with that.
So we can put 2.1 on this sheet and have it on there as a placeholder, and then in the meantime, we could identify other locations money could come from, so when the time comes, we can just pull from there. So I think we put the 2.1 on this sheet and move forward accordingly, and when it comes time, if there's another better place, then we'll discuss and pull from there.
Well, my comment, Mr. Chairman, too, is, is that we do have the money to do this. So I want the public to know we have the money to do this. We're not doing something, we don't have the money to pay for this, if we're not raising taxes on them or anything. So I like the Chairman's idea of, both of them, the Vice Chairman and Chairman, and then find out what is legal for us with the government money. I think that's probably a handy thing to know.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to work with legal and the Health Department and come up with actually like a one pager summary that has the different pots, and then at least a summary of the restrictions, so that we all and the clerk can, you know, just understand that the bigger picture better.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Is 2.1 a good number?
Yeah.
Well, I'm looking. Can we move to something else?
We can move forward and then.
Do you want to look at the fairgrounds as far as splitting it? Do you all want to come here?
I personally think we could split it.
I missed part of that, gentlemen.
Sorry.
The splitting of it, I didn't, I missed that part.
So do the front part of the concessions and all that stuff is where it's really busy on the east end? Get like that part, some bar business out there, and then come back next year, finish it out, so we can be splitting that bill, too?
Is that a necessary thing to do? I thought, I kind of had this feeling that when you made those, come back with that amendment, that we were going to give them the money and just get it all done, get it over with. Because we have fairs, you know, coming up, and we want to look as good as we can, don't we?
And that's why I'm bringing it up. Tom did say that he was good with splitting.
Right. But I'm wondering from our standpoint, if that's a good idea. If we have the, what was it, an extra 300,000? If we actually have the money this year to do it, it's just a project, I'd just like to see projects get finished. And so if it's not a strain on us to do it, I'm not sure why I would, why you guys are thinking about splitting it. I guess my, I haven't, I don't know the logic of that, if we have the money and it can all get done.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we need to work backwards a little bit here. So current, currently, with the additions that I did for the Road Fund, which is kind of a pass-through, because our current request is 58 million, 741, 126. Okay? That includes the total, that 740 for the fair, that includes the whole shebang. So when we looked at a revenue, back in our last meeting, you all came up with the $50 million number, I believe, is what I have on my notes. So out of that 58 million, you're going to take out one cent, you're going to take out the lake funds, so on and so forth. So we were getting pretty close to everyone was being comfortable as far as a balanced budget. So that does include that total 740 for the fairgrounds, if that helps the conversation at all.
Yeah, and that's, Mr. Chairman, that was the way I remembered it. I, truthfully, I just would like to see the whole thing done.
How much, basically, how much you save now? The one cent, you're saying? Give me an idea of volume. Sorry.
What I just said, or about one cent? I've said a lot so far.
About total expenditure versus the revenue.
Oh, right now, the budget request is 58 million, 741, but remember, we have to take out the lake out of that, one cent out of that. So that's about 50 million, 807, if you take out everything out of this general fund request that we need to remove. And I think the math that you and Commissioner Nicolason came up with, we were within. So. But we haven't talked about increase, wages yet, so.
No wages. Do it for free, just for the love.
Okay. For sure. Is he? Okay. I bet he'll step up.
So the fairgrounds.
Personally, I would like to see it split into, I know we want to finish the project and get it done, but I think we're.
Willing to increase the overall cost of the project to finish it by about 15,000 is the estimate on the gate that you'll probably go up just because of inflation costs. Either way, it doesn't, Tom won't care.
Well, we haven't added wages in yet, correct?
Correct.
We can have that discussion.
Yeah. Just, it's easy to sit here and say, let's spend and do this and finish that and whatnot, but at the end of the day, I mean, we're already bumping up against where we said we wanted to be at. So.
Okay, so we'll come circle back around to that, because we can circle back around to that whole equipment department as a whole also. Again, we can move stuff into reserve if you want to do that, so we can have that conversation. But do you want to talk about wages now?
Definitely sense to get that knocked down first, you think.
I think, let's talk about wages, and then we can do 39 last. That can be our budget, our balancing act, maybe. Yes? You just, you don't know what I just said, do you?
Not for sure.
Okay.
No, it's, it's planned.
So I emailed you all preliminary numbers, which I feel are pretty accurate. Stepping, so Danielle recommended a step increase, a 2% step increase. So that would become effective at the employee's hire date, okay? So at their anniversary date, hire date. So that total cost would impact would be $87,277 for that. And then she also recommended a 2% COLA that would become effective fiscal, or the July 1, and that impact is 649,288. Forty-nine, two eighty-eight. So a total is 736,565. That includes benefits, burden, and everything.
Cost of paving a parking lot. Just seeing.
Now, if you remember, the library in the request also had some dollars in there for compression issues, so on and so forth, so I did take that into account when I arrived at my figures, okay? And then also took into the account of the fairgrounds request and their current budget request. Yep. And so when the budgets, when we come to a conclusion, hopefully by end of day today, then I will go through each department with a fine tooth comb and adjust those budgets accordingly, but. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I just had, I was involved in some paving issues at one time, and what we were told, at least by a couple contractors, that it's cheaper if you do it all at once. They don't have to re-engineer coming out there with all our equipment and all that. They've got everything on site, so I don't know if the fairgrounds people, I don't know how about their numbers and who's bid it and all of that kind of thing, but I've found if it's, if the equipment and everything's there and they can get it all done, that's a better price usually. And so, the way I recollected this whole discussion, we, with everybody's budget that was presented, we were able to handle all their budgets because we had the money and we had all of these other funds that are coming in to take down this main number of 58 million. That's what I wrote down. So I didn't, I guess I didn't realize we were thinking about carving things off of this for various reasons. Because my thought is that we're going to have to do it at some point, and to keep spreading it out and keep hashing it out and keep doing it, and the prices keep going up, is something I really, truly would like to avoid.
So this roughly $740,000 increase is not in the 58 million?
Correct.
Okay. Fifty-eight, seven forty-four.
Yeah, so the total that we, you need to retake from that 58 million would be 7.8 million. That includes 1% lakes and road funds. Yes.
Are there any other big topics or categories that we're going to need to add that we haven't talked about yet?
No.
When Mike Agler says these floods and washouts are going to cost maybe $200,000 or less, where have we accounted for that in our budget?
We have not, because that was new conversation, so obviously it hasn't been in the request, so that's another spot-on point that.
So that's where I was kind of headed.
Other than the Stroh hacker one that I talked to about, that's the only addition.
Has been requested, but we know it's coming. So.
Now, I don't know what he has in those road fund monies as far as any reserve excess, what have you, so I can't speak to that. Jim?
So have you had any conversations with Mike as far as fixing these roads and whatnot? Or is there any state assistance funds or anything that he's looking into? Have you heard?
As far as funds, no. I mean, all I've heard to this point is some of the preliminary numbers to fix, like Cortez, I think was over a million dollars.
Yeah.
But that's it.
Is he going, is he looking into that at all, or?
As far as funding with the state?
Yeah, just any recovery funds.
I honestly don't know. I'll get with him and find out.
In light of that, I think that's another reason to be cautious about the paving and the fair. And Dallas is exactly right.
Dallas is exactly right about, you know, mobilization costs and, you know, material costs, oil, that stuff's just going to go up. But I think in light of where we are, if it's plus or minus $15,000, I think it'd be prudent to hold off on part of that paving.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd like everybody to consider, and I brought it up a couple times, and it isn't my idea, the city did it, and that was they hired a firm to go out and examine all their buildings in all their areas and what may be needed for maintenance. And they have a report that they can easily refer to, because we seem to talk about this a lot, and it's like we're reactionaries. I'd rather be on the cutting edge of things personally and be ahead of it, rather than respond to it when it's a problem. And so I would like the commission to consider thinking about doing what the city did with respect to getting that information one way or another. And after talking to Carter, he thought it was one of the better things they've done. So if you want to put that on an agenda upcoming, Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't be a bad idea, it wouldn't take that long to discuss either, really. But I just, I just feel like, gentlemen, we react. We're never on the real cutting edge of anything. And I'd like to get ahead of it. I'd like to get ahead of some of this stuff rather than behind it.
All right, so we got like four things we're talking about now, so let's circle back to the very beginning. We're talking about wages. Right now, we have the wage question out there. I think it was brought up as far as roads, which I'll get with Mike, and we'll figure out if there's any state assistance on that. And then we're talking about the fair itself. So I think the two things we need to answer now are the wages and what direction you want to go with. You want to fully fund the fair parking lot or half?
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, the pavement.
No. Grandstand.
Or the grand.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm good with the wages, the COLA and the annual 2%. That'll bring them. It'll keep everybody in line with where we're, what, and avoid what we went through to get to this point. Now, I really don't want to ever do that again. So I'd say we keep that, the fairgrounds. Again, Tom wasn't one way or the other with what potential unexpecteds we're going to come across with lodge and with the health department and everything else. I think we ought to sit on half of it myself, get half done, and then move forward next year and get the other half done. I just, I know we've got stuff in reserve, funds in reserve, but it's still, I just, I don't want to spend everything all at once.
I agree with that.
Majority vote here.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to make it clear as far as the wages, some, not every, there are a few employees that are, we're calling it redlined, that are maxed out or at midpoint when they don't have years of service to match that midpoint range. So everyone would be receiving the COLA, however, not everyone would be receiving the 2% step increase. So that needs to be very clear to you all and to the employees that that would be the case.
Interesting, that's just simply because they're maxed out. I mean, they're, they've been making, are making, or have been making what they would have until they either get more years of service or just been here.
Correct, correct, yeah. Based on the wage study that Danielle did in November. And there's a few, it's not a great number, but it is there. So I just want to be clear on the intention of the step increase.
Mr. Chairman, Tracy, is there an inequity right now that exists with the employees that maybe we haven't addressed? And I'll give you an example. Some of these people that didn't have a raise for years and years and years that should have, and then finally it got caught up, but the years they didn't were never recognized. And so I'm just wondering if there's some inequity that we should be addressing, or what we're doing is fair, and they all consider it fair, and we're treating them fairly, basically.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I believe throughout the years, yes, there's been inequities for sure, but we can't go back. And I think if we just look to moving forward and remedying those as we can, a good start was the market study that Danielle did. You know, there's some things that need some fine tuning, but with time and with getting on a path that we, that the right path and continuing it, I think will help remedy those situations that have happened in the past. I think the goal, and all the commissioners and every board, the goal is to, you know, maintain and keep our valued employees. But I think we're on, we have a good start, but there's still work that needs to be done, for sure.
Well, so you think we're on the right path?
Yes.
Well, so is what we're doing, is it, is it, should more be done, or should we just?
I think given the circumstance and the situation we were in, being so far behind, I think it's going to take steps, not leaps. And I think that's all the budget can handle, you know, being prudent to what we can afford and what we want to do are two different things. But I truly do believe that we are on the right path.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Peter.
Tracy brought up a good point about wanting to make sure that we're clear on the messaging to employees. And I know last year Chairman Portoglio sent out a letter, and I am wondering if that's the plan for this year as well, where whoever's drafting it and whoever's signing it, make sure that that is understood, both with respect to the, kind of the cap on the step. But anyway, just wanted to make that point, that it's on somebody's to-do list. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, Danielle and I have talked about that, and there will be individual memos to each department head and/or elected, and then some of the individuals that are maxed out will be notated in that memo. So I think it'll be a lot clearer direction this time, and will be helpful for the department heads and the electeds.
And like you said, there isn't, there isn't that many that are in that boat, so it could almost be a personal conversation.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. The contract with the architect MOA is 2.22 million dollars, so $2,220,000.
Mr. Chairman, Peter, is that, is there in the contract, is there, do they bill that out monthly, or what do they do? Because it was like Mr. Schenck, he said he would. out monthly, or what do they do? Because it was like Mr. Shank, he said he would bill his out monthly. I thought that's what he said.
The best of my recollection, and I'm, I'm pretty certain that it's billing as the work progresses. So it may not be exactly monthly, but it'll be periodic, and, and it's all spelled out in that 50-page contract.
And it, and so it's basically gonna be paid out to some level over probably a three-year period, as I recall. 3.2, I think, is what they were saying.
Okay, we good with the wages then?
Yes.
Okay. Back to the grandstands?
Sure. Sorry, got a sunflower down.
A whole sunflower.
Hmm?
A whole sunflower. Do you want half or whole?
No, I, I think I pretty much said my opinion here just a little bit ago was half.
Okay. That's the direction I want to go. I, I know it's gonna cost a little bit more money next year, but we seem to keep adding things to this and we keep going up. So, and it's not gonna hurt us by not having, in my opinion, having this completed in one year. We can do it over two.
Right, I agree with that.
I'm good with what you guys want to do.
So do we have a figure for that? Because in looking at their narrative, I mean, I don't know, it has a total amount requested of 250,000 under buildings and structures. So is all that grandstands? I'm, I'm a little confused.
Hold on.
On page 13 of their, of their narrative.
So at the time of their narrative, hold on. Page?
13.
13, yeah. They're asking for 300, and that was an old estimate, a year-old estimate, not a current one.
Where are you finding, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill, for grandstands?
Say what now?
For the grandstand bathrooms? I thought we were talking about grandstands.
Oh, we are. Never mind, sorry.
The 250.
Yeah, there we go. 250. That was last year, thank you. That was last year's estimate for the bathrooms. Prices have gone up substantially since then, and so then that's why he came back with that other estimate a while ago. And it was like 350, I can't, anyways, about 350. But then he came back again after I asked him if he could split it out between two years, and he said he could. It'd be like 200 this year and then 215 next year.
So basically, all we'd be doing is taking 50,000 off this total 740,000 request?
Of the, of the old estimate, yeah. Because once he got that updated, then it was substantially more. Trying to find the email. The new estimate for, after he made, after he came in and we asked him for a current bid or current estimate, it was 399,000.
So that 250 wasn't even accurate?
No, it was a year-old estimate.
Mr. Chairman, Jim, I think you're making my argument for me here.
Thank you.
Because the more that this stuff gets put off, I, I just think we have the money to do some of this stuff. That, that pays off in more, more than interest we could get off some of this money, when you balance it out, if you stay ahead of it. But I was talking to the plumber today, and he's telling me about how everything he has has gone up, and now next year it's even gonna be worse. And we, I think we're, it's just something we're faced with right now.
So again, realistically, we would only be taking 50,000 off of the total request of 740?
If we split it out for two years, if we did the full thing, it'd be about 400.
If we did the whole thing, we need to add two?
Yeah. If we do the whole thing, plus two. If we do half of it, minus .5. Like I said, Tom was good either way.
So a half would be 400?
Half would be right at 200.
200.
Full thing would be right at 400.
Good.
That was, that was during that conversation where we asked him for updated bids for the, the signs and all that other stuff.
And then we hammered out the discussion on the asphalt also. We decided to leave that in there, correct?
Yes. So, like I said, they don't care. They just need direction, whatever you guys feel like.
Do they have a preference?
Well, yeah, everything all at once, always.
That would be my guess.
But...
Chairman, Jim, the bathrooms were gonna be a priority of, of the 400.
Yes.
And then this, there was some signage out, out in the front. The paving's separate, so I'm trying to recall what the other big-ticket items.
Chutes and fences.
And carpet. There's sort of $5,000 worth of carpet in classrooms and the office.
Yeah.
But he'll be able to get the bathrooms done for the 200 if, if we're at 200?
Yeah, that's what his last text or email was, something like that.
I thought they said they could do the bathrooms for 65,000.
No.
They didn't say that?
No.
One bathroom?
Hmm, he figures.
The mints.
The ones up front where the bathroom smell is so bad at the, on the east side, when it starts getting used quite a bit, that's where everybody goes, is into that side there. So he figured that one would have to be, that'd be priority, is that section in there. And then whichever they can do on the backside there, on the west and the central.
I'm still good at half.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we're making, making some good improvements out there with the pavement, and Tom will be able to make some good improvements for the public side. I think that's good, and then next year will be remaining.
So am I correct in saying I'm going to reduce that 740,000 dollar figure to 690,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That helps, helps the numbers come together a little bit better, too.
Did you gentlemen have any other notes, anything that I may have missed? Any concerns, questions?
In reference to just the fair or across the board?
In general.
So I do have a question. Did we add, increase with the job change for Tom?
I have not. That was my next question.
Okay.
So that is not included in this number. So both positions approved? The increases for both positions?
What does that, dollar-wise, what's that look like?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. We would, if we did one, we'd have to do the other, correct?
I think I've recommended.
I, I, I think it'd be wise to do that.
Yeah.
Because somebody's time may be taken up with a lot of other things at that point.
Yeah.
Especially if we do what? What I'm recommending there.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, the description goes from building maintenance director to facilities superintendent. And then that was the 93, 883, 93,000, 883 that we, in that email string, read too. And then the supervisor, being at 54,080 dollars.
What does that move up to? What was it before then here?
Yeah, plus the burden is, were we thinking the burden's 25%?
Correct.
What, Dallas?
What was the supervisor's salary? What, how much did that get raised?
I'm doing that math right now.
Okay.
Pure, pure assumption on who that would be. Are you looking at the 54 for supervisor?
Right.
For the email?
And so Danielle indicated that'd be between a one and a three dollar an hour raise, depending, I think, on who might get the position.
So that's only a $4,000 a year difference?
For both?
4,000 for the supervisor and a little over 10 for the facilities superintendent?
Okay. Plus 25%.
That's the...
So still?
Probably about 16, total is 16, total, including burden. Real rough, but close.
So 74, 742, 43, somewhere in there? That's still... Tom loses half of his bathrooms, but that, that there, more than that.
Mm-hmm.
Nice balance.
Well, I, I, I'm in favor of this, just kind of what Peter was just saying a minute ago, as far as Dallas wanting inventory done of all the buildings. Who better to do it than your facilities director to go through and give us that list and point all those things out, so?
Yeah, I'd be happy if it just gets done. I don't care who does it.
Then again, maybe we don't want to know.
I think that's been true in the past, Jim.
So are we good with this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Did we talk about, I know we did, but the beds for the, for the?
Use crisis, huh?
Yeah. We must have, because I added, I have a total amount in there of 168,625 right now. And we added 118,0625 for the five beds.
Which tab are we looking at now?
It's gonna be under Commissioners, General Accounts. So it's gonna say Commissioners, and then it's going to probably be the second page of the green bar.
You're so nice.
No, no, don't tell anybody.
I'll come on and get in trouble. This one here?
They had a note of 118,625.
That was in addition to the 50,000 dollar request that they asked for. So I had plugged in 168,625. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct.
That's the number I got written down here?
Yeah. Just looking for any other notes I'm gonna put down here or there. That's what I got, too. Chairman, shifting gears just a touch, you said the Metro was potentially gonna be reexamined or something like that?
Yes, David and I went to a, a meeting with them here a week ago. They're redoing a lot of different things, but part of it is, I thought in the beginning it was all, all agencies getting back together again and sharing those costs. And two of them are still just on contract, because they take care of their own, they actually house some of the animals they pick up and whatnot. So it's not gonna change like we, we thought it was. And we're always paying a percentage, not, we're not on a flat contract like some of the others are.
What percentage do we pay, do you know?
Don't know.
14.
Yeah, almost 15.
Almost 16, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, on a very important... Mr. Chairman, on a very important note, I just want to make sure that the county clerk's election equipment is going to be approved for this current fiscal instead of fiscal '26 as on the proposed one cent schedule.
You need that ahead of time.
I, I need a verbal. Please.
I'm okay.
This isn't your horse trailer, is it?
It's not a horse trailer. It's a trailer. It's an enclosed trailer for election equipment.
Have you implemented all of the Secretary of State's changes?
You, yes, you, of course. So that's okay.
Your horse trailer?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Were there any questions on any of the ones?
There's a joke behind that, Steve.
I'm sure there is. And the only question that I have before we move forward is, did we decide on the, are we moving forward on the beds that we were talking about? Got sidetracked.
Youth crisis?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, okay, thank.
You know, are you talking about the extra $100,000 they asked for?
168,000.
But we approved that, didn't we?
Well, that's what I'm asking. We were just talking about it just now.
So that's the word.
Are you good with it or not?
I am definitely good with it.
Thank you.
Did, uh, did we need to talk about IT with their build out at, out at the?
Station.
Do we need to talk about that one?
Other than the fact that it's a lot more than $500,000?
Yeah. Actually.
Perhaps.
Maybe not now. They're redesigning it so it doesn't?
Oh, they are?
Yeah. It's not, it's going to be on the, on the ground floor instead of clear up on top again where they were going to put it.
So maybe until we have a clearer number? Because 500 was allocated out of the tribal assistance money. Is that going to be more in line, or is it still going to be over?
I think that'll be more in line with, with the addition from the participation from fire department.
Also, the new development director salary is not included in these numbers either. But again, that can be a budget adjustment later in the year, once we get one hired.
Hopefully he doesn't take that one.
Okay.
And we did add that money to the student court?
Yes, the 6,000?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the assessor, we decided on the furniture was, okay.
Speaking of the assessor, we went two, correct, positions additional?
Yes.
And we're accounting for the insurance premiums increase and all that, right with your?
Ours?
Yeah.
Health insurance?
Yeah.
But it'll be absorbed out of the benefit trust?
Okay.
Which is separate from the general fund budget. It's a restricted account. Should we address the equipment rental for Roden Bridge on that piece of machinery that we are renting?
The dozer.
Yeah. So currently the rental is $14,000 a month. He only put $25,000 in that account line.
Should probably put enough in there to rent it for the rest of the year, at least. If we aren't going to buy it.
What was, what was the balance I'm buying at?
Three something.
Three fifty, yeah. So is there 85,000, 84,000?
So, yeah?
Yeah, but yes, what? Yes?
Put another 84,000 in there for the rest of the year to cover it.
Total 84?
Yeah, if it's 14,000 a month for six months.
But then do I need to add the, I think we need to add the initial 25,000 that he asked for for other items that come out of that account line?
The only, yeah, I mean, we can't, it's not that much money. Well, I mean, I talked to the salesman, happened to actually bring it up the other day while I was talking about something else, whether the county was going to buy that or not. I said, it's a good decision, and don't try and pin me down. So he said that at some point in the near future, I understood, he was going to get with Mike and see if there was maybe another machine to rent to Mike and/or maybe for one to sell. It kind of sounded like maybe there was somebody else that might be interested in that, in purchasing that machine. So, you know, it wasn't a pressure kind of thing. It was just, but it didn't sound to me like that machine was going to continue to be rented for another six months. Now, that's not from a Roden Bridge director, who may be looking at exactly renting it for six more months. But I think if I were betting, I would believe that Mike would come to us before the end of six months with another proposal, either for that machine or something else. So I, I don't care what we do, if we add 84 plus 25, or just take it at 84.
84 for six months, Steve?
Yep. Six. So 109,000, right?
Well, I have 84, or I have six months of being 87,756.
Well, I went up your 14,000.
14,626.
Oh, I didn't go up to 626.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. I need to be more clear. So that plus the 25?
Yeah.
And maybe if he doesn't need it, we can utilize some of that for, if there's an acquisition.
Yeah.
We can utilize some of that.
So that'll be 112,756.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. I also asked him about his machinery, equipment parts line, and that he had 200,000, and he was com, he was comfortable with that figure staying, that amount.
Okay.
So. Also, the county vehicle servicing line, he was comfortable with the 80,000 that he requested. So we did go over those lines again.
So he didn't, didn't want the increase at all? Okay.
So did we decide on the health department for certain? Add it to this reserve worksheet?
Yeah, the 2.2.
I think so for placeholder.
Yep.
Yep, and then we'll, I think Commissioner Nekulayson said he was going to work on finding other avenues.
I was going to give you something to help you understand, us all that understand the strings that are attached.
Yeah, I think, I didn't think he said he was going to get his other avenues. He's going to tell us the strings attached.
Strings?
I thought you were going to say he's going to go out and find 9 million.
Well, the strings in the, in the timeframes, right?
Once a year is what it is.
That'd be kind of nice.
Let's try to go fund, see how far that goes.
So that 2.2 will not be included in this $58 million number? It's a separate?
Yeah.
Yep.
Just so we're all clear. Any other, anything other glaring topics, concerns regarding the budget?
Just a minute, please.
Mr. Chairman, so I just want to know in my own mind, the budget cuts we discussed here today are the only ones that have been made since the last time we met?
Yeah, that's just by the ways and things. Talking to Eileen a little bit with the AV for this room and for the, potentially the smaller meeting room. Did we want to, did you have anything for, in the budget for that stuff? To update this one so that there could be in-screen presentation?
That wasn't in any of Tom's stuff?
Hmm, I think it was in hers.
Remind you?
Yeah. So it's AV specific? Yeah. And that was just a, I don't think that was added to anything.
It's not in here?
I don't think it's in our. She's just saying, I think that was just her saying we could do that.
Do you want me to add?
If you would.
I think I may have asked portrait. Oh, she's out of the office.
Anyways, I believe that was to update this room, to bring it up to speed. And then I talked to her a little bit about the small, smaller rooms all wired up so that we can do what we want to eventually. And that, but they're going to test using a TV and computer and whatnot to just have in there so that we can use that room for, for discussions like this. It is so much easier to talk just across the table to each other. But, so that may work, where we can just record it and then post it later, since there's really no interaction anyways.
Just a question for you guys. Did you get a notice to sign into the office? Because it seems to me like it could be a hack on the emails we get, on the county email. Because I had something come up that says somebody sent me a letter about the money at the First Interstate Bank, but I don't see it on here. And then this deal says, please sign into your office.
You might have to change your password.
Enter password. It says, well, I haven't, I haven't bid on it. I, I think there may be, I'll go down and ask Eileen before I leave, but it.
If you ever get an email that you don't, aren't sure about.
Oh, yeah, I don't take them. This is one of them. But the email disappeared, and then this thing shows up to enter your password, so.
So Jim, are you talking about adding about 34,800 or a different amount? And would you be adding it to the capital improvements for this building?
Yeah, I think so. I can't, I don't see it in Tom's stuff either.
See, I see like 9,305, 27 capital improvements for, I believe, this building. Has the assessor moved in at Chiller for 365?
Right, and that's it.
Add 34.
I'd add 34 if you guys want to increase the capability for this room. And potentially a little bleed over to the smaller room to make it more friendly for meetings like this.
So is it a capital improvement though, or is it more?
It needs to go in IT. It needs to go in IT.
Okay.
That's her request.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if you don't mind, I can reach out and see if she is, if it is or is not in her budget. And if you all are in agreement that you would like it added, then I could ask her what line she would like me to put it into. And then I will let you guys know via email if that happens.
I'm good with that.
That works.
Yes. Everyone's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Cool, thanks.
Is there anything from the, anything more for the library, Peter? Just going through my notes here, sorry.
Well, that's another one of those 30 million, like, where we? No, Jim, I don't think there's anything else we need to add or worry about on the library. At least I'm aware.
Okay.
Tracy, I did have a note here under the Commissioners tab, the guarding item expense. And I had a note that Dave was going to look and see if the rent went up or not. Did you ever hear back from him?
I have not.
Is there going to be a new position added in the county attorney's office? She's not going to hire another lawyer?
Well, it's not going to be added. We have one up.
Right.
Replacement.
Have we considered that cost in the, or...
It's still in there, right?
Yeah, it would be in there.
I guess I, if I noticed it, I forgot that I noticed it, in terms of the amount.
I, I, I don't think it was really raised, because it was already built into it.
It's just a big, it'd be like the sheriff's department not having four or five deputies, but the money's there for when they fill those positions.
And we took out the funding for the Pathfinder Bridge, correct? The 200K?
Yes.
For which one, Mr. Mill?
The, where is it? The 200,000 for, out of parks for the Pathfinder Bridge?
What account line? At the lake?
Yeah. Yeah, we took that one out.
We took it out.
Yeah.
Oh, out of 90, 70?
Yeah.
Yeah, we reduced that down to 501, 718 for the diabase, that's just diabase construction. It's all that's in there now.
Is anybody seeing that out there? Oh, my gosh. That's, if I had a boat, that's where I'd be going now. It's nice.
Wow. Seal of approval?
No, it's, it's, it's not a little improvement compared to how it used to be. It's quite the thing.
Maybe you should buy a boat?
Negative. I do not need another money pit.
There are two, two, two good days when you own a boat, aren't there? The day you buy it and the day you sell it. Those are the best two days to own a boat.
Oh.
I found it to be true, kinda. They did, that was IT. They said that one thing was legit and one thing wasn't. Just as an aside, did you gentlemen see that email we all got, where the legislature passed a statute that said you had to go take some training unless you were a CPA?
It's gonna be offered here in September, right?
Yeah.
It's my understanding.
Yep.
I forgot the date. You guys remember the date?
It's during Waco. In the, towards the end of September, during Waco, the conference that we're having.
Cause I'm gonna be gone the 21st through the 24th or some, Thursday through Saturday.
I think we're doing it the end of September. Is it Waco the end of September?
Yes, that last week.
Yeah, Waco's the last week, so you should be back. So you don't get out and go into school.
Good, I, I don't mind going. I'm not sure that that statute is legitimate, though.
And we did, did increase the 42,000 for the additional deputy for internet crimes, right?
Yep. Cause you're getting that back in grant funding, or a portion of it?
That was in its request, yes.
I'm good. I think we can, I think we probably reduce the clerk's trailer, though, by about 5,000. I mean, she, just, a horse trailer ain't that much. 10,000 for a horse trailer. Don't throw anything at me, please.
If you need that money, I would be happy, well, not happy, but I would give it up. And borrow horse trailer from you.
I got a nice enclosed one.
I have several, but I'm not hauling election equipment in them.
Well, I didn't say. You can haul, I wouldn't be hauling it, it'd just be a trailer.
No, I can't escape school. I'll be back.
Darn it. So just looking at our preliminary numbers, um, with taking out the roads and the lakes and all that, we're at 51,648,532.
51 what?
648,532.
How much is that up from last year?
Just a second, I'll let you know.
Oh, that's perfect. Actually, I think that...
About, a little over 2 million.
200?
2 million.
Oh, 2 million. That's not bad.
It's free.
Did you, oh, you found me a free one?
Yeah.
Wow, thank you.
I'm gonna text.
I don't think you should say that.
Please do.
The electric Volkswagen bus.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what. I will call you gentlemen when it's delivery day on hauling all of our equipment, and then I bet your tune changes very quickly.
Now, just be busy.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No. Michelle will put it on your calendar. Cause Roden Bridge does a bang-up job on delivering my equipment.
Oh, you know, there's that button that says deny or decline for the calendar.
Blame me, I, they probably would've got it approved a lot easier than me. I have had, I have, yes, I've had more discussion over this $10,000 trailer than we have multimillion-dollar expenditure.
So them doing a bang-up job, is it truly, like, they bang it up, or?
No. They do a great job. They do a great job. Oh, thanks, Peter. I have one that looks just like that at home. But mine's blue. So what will happen now, so I've already done the publication. That was a proposed budget. Obviously, we've made changes since then. So when you look at the proposed budget, that was published in the newspaper, it's gonna differ from this, just because of the changes we've made. And then on Monday, I will drop a resolution, and then that's how we will pass the, this budget. Oh, yeah. I thought he was gonna get with Mike and talk about funding.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Mike and see if he's...
So we don't need to deal with that one?
No.
We'll deal with it.
I think we could, as it come, yeah, I think that might be better, because like I said, I don't know what he has in any of the unrestricted funding in those road funds. I'm not sure if he has any surplus at all.
I think we're gonna have to obviously look for funding elsewhere, too, because the, just the cost on them alone, that he's been discussing is, is up there. There's a lot of damage.
There is. Not just, not just the flood damage, but there's damage, if you've been out to Pathfinder Road, that's just ridiculous. Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the budget?
No more questions.
I appreciate all your time and effort on this.
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Peter, did you, did you give any thought to hiring the guy who's the representative for the study department?